Call this meeting to order. Welcome to the Southbridge School Committee meeting on Tuesday, August 14th, 2018. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bishop.
Present.
Ms. Duval.
Present.
Dr. Page.
Excused.
Ms. Peliquin.
Present.
Ms. Ryan.
Present.
Ms. Shea.
Present.
Mr. Thomo.
Present.
Six present, one excused.
Thank you. We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we will move on to public input. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the school committee tonight? I'll ask again if there is there anyone in the audience tonight that would like to speak to the school committee. Seeing no movement, we will move on to the discussion of minutes. Just again as a reminder, we cannot vote on these, but if I'm sure all of you have had a time to look over this, is there any changes or additions you'd like to make to the minutes? Seeing none, we will move on to new business and we will move on to the receivers superintendent updates.
Great, thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. I'll begin just giving a brief update on staffing. It's been a very, very busy summer, although I think it's gone smoothly. We have hired 39 licensed educators this summer. We had 31 staff members last year on waivers. This year, it looks like will be less than 10. We do currently have about 14 openings for certified positions, although I understand that there were multiple interviews held today and I expect to see recommended candidates in my office before the end of the week. So we're likely to be opening with some potential shortage in science, mathematics, it's an area of great concern, and special education. So we continue to seek resumes and ask folks if you know qualified educators that are interested in filling those positions. It's something that we are working very diligently to do so. Outside of that, we've hired nine administrators in the district. So you've seen some movement across the assistant principals and principals, and we will be introducing those individuals as the year goes on, I'm sure. There was a recent coverage in the newspaper breaking down all those moves. More importantly, this past week, we had our administrative retreat. Quite a few topics were covered, and I want to just kind of give you a flavor of some of the training that administrators have covered this week. So risk needs assessments, the law around 504 and special education, the development of language arts curriculum for pre-K through grades five, early warning systems for our secondary schools, looking at indicators that might suggest that students need assistance prior to experiencing great difficulty. Climate and culture training remains a top focus, new district purchasing procedures, evaluation process following the state's evaluation guidelines, and cultural competency. This week, we're focused on new teacher training, so many of our new teachers have attended, about 35 or so have been in attendance, getting instruction on curriculum instruction, classroom management, creating of lesson plans, working with students with IEPs, individualized education plans, that's part of our special education approach, 504 plans, which is part of Section 504, which is federal legislation for individuals with disabilities, the evaluation process again for new teachers, and an update on district technology. Next week, we begin with a whole district training, and we'll be focused on the implementation of the student information management system called ASPN. That's a very significant lift, because just about every employee of the district will have to interact with the student information management system, so classroom grades, attendance, all kinds of demographic data are all stored in that system. We also will be concentrating, providing teachers with training on the elementary literacy program, again, pre-K through five, and most importantly, in many ways, is climate and culture. So all teachers are receiving training in classroom management, cultural competencies, and the implementation of positive behaviors, interventions, and supports. So there's a tremendous amount of learning going on with adults, and obviously preparing them for the learning that's required for children. With that said, I would like to ask Seth to update you on the budget, and then I'm going to ask Assistant Superintendent Ms. Farrick to update you on what we believe to be a quite successful summer program, Summer Learning Lab. So we'll begin with Mr. Farrick.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to first let me talk about the fiscal year 2019 budget, which is the year that we're in now, just as a quick update. So we've opened the new fiscal year in terms of our general fund. We've received our 2019 entitlement federal and state grant allocations, which we are applying for, and those applications should be submitted to the state in the coming weeks. One potentially hopeful piece of news as well is that as part of the state's overall budget that they approved at the end of July, that included an additional supplement for students impacted by Hurricane Maria from a year ago. As you recall, we did receive additional funding to support these students last year, so this appears to be new money. It is unclear how they will be allocating that money, how much we will be getting, what the new rules will be, but we will be monitoring that very closely, because we received just shy of 100 students last year from Puerto Rico who were impacted by the hurricane. Another piece of news is regarding our new financial system. Immediately before this meeting, there was a joint meeting of the general government and town council subcommittee meeting. At this meeting, they reviewed the contract with Tyler Technologies for us to contract both the town and the school for a new payroll, financial, human resources, integrated financial system. As you are aware, we have our financial and payroll systems are run on a system called KVS that was implemented approximately 15 years ago, and we've been using that system ever since. So Tyler Technologies owns a municipal school district product called Munis, more commonly known, and it is the predominant system that's used across Massachusetts school districts and municipalities. So we're very excited. It's an integrated, up-to-date system where information is stored on the cloud, and from an employee's perspective, they'll be able to log in online, be able to view their deductions and make changes, pull off any relevant information, as well as be notified in advance of their paycheck, and actually get a preview, and to be able to give them time to notify if there's any issues or changes. So it'll be a real benefit to our employees. From a vendor perspective, they'll also have the ability to log in from the self-service to see when they're being paid, where their invoices are. As you may recall, a year ago, there was a lot of confusion around bill paying, and so that will be rectified with this. And finally, in terms of it is an up-to-date system where both payroll system and the financial system talk together, versus right now, we have two separate systems, even though it's under the umbrella of KVS. And this will just give us another better lens to be able to monitor, evaluate, and analyze our spending to make sure that we are able to spend the limited resources we have in the best possible way for our students. Once this approved by the overall general government, by the overall town council, we will begin implementation. This is quite a long process, and it will take at least approximately two years to fully implement the system. Finally, as we may have mentioned before in the budget, you may recall this, once the school year is up and running, and we have accepted and set up all of our grants, we will be then looking ahead to create a multi-year projection. We want to prevent the problems that happened a year ago, where we had a mid-year deficit of close to $1 million, we had to cut the budget by 10%, and instead, we want to look ahead a few years, analyze what our cost drivers are, and make sure that we're able to create well-informed decisions under the limited revenue expenses that we, limited revenue projections that we would expect. So you'll be hearing more about that in the coming months. With that, it's my update. Thank you.
So I want to speak about our Summer Learning Lab. We decided to, we didn't have a lot of money for summer school this year. We wrote a grant probably back in April or May to get money to try a pilot program. So we, and we were awarded, it was about $100,000 in funding sources. It was found to us through the state, but a lot of it was federal money. We created a 20 half-day program for rising kindergartens, first grade and second graders. Overall, we serviced about 80 students. There was classrooms in all three of our elementary schools. The bulk of the students were at Eastford Road, because that was the rising kindergarten and first graders, and then we had dual-language classes at West Street, and we had one second grade class at Charlton Street. We had eight teachers, eight education assistants, a PBIS coach, which is our climate and culture coach, a family liaison, three site coordinators, and one program coordinator. Students received free transportation, free breakfast, and free lunch, and they were truly recruited with the idea that they were going to come to learn to read, make new friends, and become leaders in the building. We were focusing on early literacy, teaching the students really how to be students with a high focus on PBIS, which is a Positive Behavior and Intervention Support, about really explicitly teaching students how to follow routines, how to be respectful, safe, and responsible. Having said that, we incorporated some pretty intensive professional development. We partnered with University of Connecticut Graduate School of Education, who is really the foundation of PBIS internationally. It's between them and the University of Oregon, who have worked together to really create the PBIS model, and it's now international. So teachers were paid but volunteered to participate in this, in the Summer Learning Lab. They received 10 hours of intensive PBIS and cultural competency training that was all interwoven together. Our goal was to really be able to create the conditions for learning for all students to thrive, and give the teachers the tools to help do that. We also had another partner, the Latino Education Institute, which is through Worcester State, and they worked with our families to really help us understand what are the barriers that our families are experiencing in being effective partners for their kids in our schools. In the YMCA wasn't a formal partner, but we thought when our recruiting numbers were a little low, we realized a huge piece of it was that families had already signed up for the full day of daycare programming at the Y, and they were so willing to work with us that we were able to have the students in the morning, and then feed them lunch, and then drop them off at the Y. So it was really great to have the flexibility. We started the program with a huge launch party in the field at Cole Ave, where we had bubble maker and a machine, I guess he's an artist, around bubbles and music, and families came, and we had pizza. The Latino Education Institute was there to really start recruiting parents to come to the focus groups and be able to share their experience, signed up for families to come in and participate in the classroom. We really wanted a piece of every day where a family would come in and either read a book in English or in Spanish, maybe tell a story, share a family ritual or culture with the class, or just come and hang out and be part of the class. It was really about hoping that we could help families see the school system in a different way, and have the teachers connect with families in a different way, because we know in order for us to be successful, we need to partner. We need to partner with the families. We need everybody to feel welcome in our schools. And I am very, very pleased to report that we were able to collect data along the way. We collected climate data from families every week, students every week, and teachers every week, and on average, the way to summarize it is, people were very happy. The mean average of the data for parents on a four-point scale was like 3.9, with teachers, it was a 3.8 out of four, and students were on a three-point scale, and their average was a 2.7. So people were happy to come to school, be part of the experience. We focused on early literacy. Every classroom had two new classroom libraries. One was focused on character building, and that was really the crux of the PBIS. So we were able to purchase probably close to 100 books for every classroom, many in English and in Spanish, and the teachers started out every morning reading a character building book with curriculum attached to it, and then the students read it, talked about it, and then went off to their desk area and do some sort of writing activity. And these are little kids, so maybe it wasn't literally writing a story, but they were either talking into tape recorders, they were painting a story, using rubber stamps to tell a story, or just sharing a story with the person next to them. And what is significant about the literacy data that we saw is that you have to remember, these students were rising. So it was kindergarteners that weren't really kindergarteners yet, they were just coming out of preschool, kindergarteners that were just entering first grade, and first graders just entering second grade. Over 50% of the students did very well. We saw growth in their literacy, and other kids just kind of maintained, so, which is great in that experience as well. In terms of the positive behaviors and intervention, a huge piece of what we do is around that structure and strategy is catching the kids doing something positive. And when that happens, it's about a teacher having a positive interaction with a student, and sometimes that could include giving an incentive, like dollar, not real money, but something they could use at the school store. And I have to tell you, over 11,200 incentive dollars were earned this summer over the eight classrooms. And part of the crux of PBIS is when something isn't going well in a classroom, what you need to do is increase the intensity. So I'm not saying every single child was perfectly well behaved, and every teacher did everything perfectly, but it was about acknowledging when something wasn't going well, how to increase the intensity to meet the needs of where the kids were. We had a total of three students that earned some office discipline referrals, so they were doing something that would have been considered naughty, and I have to tell you, all three of them ended up receiving significant support outside of school that was well beyond the capacity of a public school, and they're getting their needs met in a very different way. So they were true outliers. We were able to see that when the teachers had the tools they need, and the students had the conditions for learning, that learning was happening. And when a child was having a hard time, it wasn't because of what was happening in the classroom, it was something that was going on with the child. And then we had the PBIS coach, we had adjustment counselor, we had a lot of people in to support. And we ended the year with a huge party at Cole Ave. We had a magician, we had a face painter, the staff was cooking burgers and hot dogs for the kids, and it was truly a positive experience that I hope that we're going to be able to replicate and continue.
Thank you.
Just a couple of follow-ups real quick. If any of the school board members are interested, I have a copy of the memorandum and the contract for the Munis system, so if any of you are interested in looking this over, I gladly scan it and send it out to all of you, because it's really, it was a really informative document, and it's been, this conversion's been needed for a long time. And on the summer program, I heard a lot of positive feedback from parents about it. A lot of parents wanted to get in, and I'm hoping it will continue to expand over the next couple of years. It's great to see, you know, these PBIS strategies being put into place. It's desperately needed, and I'm really happy that it was such a resounding success. So, good job, you guys.
It's a wonder you had enough time, with all this rain, to get all this stuff done.
Are we taking questions tonight, Mr. Chair, Ms. Chair?
Of course.
Thank you. We had several reports. I'd just like to ask some questions. Dr. Valar, you mentioned we had nine new administrators. How many new staff were you employing this year?
How many new staff overall? We are looking to fill 51 positions total. We currently have about 14 open.
14 open, so we still, that's quite a transition. Over to Seth. Last year's budget must be closed out by now. What do we end up with for unemployment figures for last school year?
Sorry, could you repeat that question again?
How much did we spend on unemployment last year?
On unemployment? I don't have that information off the top, but we're happy to provide that after.
I'll be asking that at each meeting, okay? That's a number that I really try to pay attention to, okay? Because that's money we lost, we got no value out of it, and it's money we could certainly use better.
Understood.
I do want to comment on the Munis system. It's a great upgrade for the system, for the community as well. I've used it in other towns. It's a big upgrade over what we were using, the KVS, not a very good system at all. So happy to see that. And how's the ASPN implementation? Are we ready to roll with that?
We are. Folks have received their training, but as you know, the rubber really hits the road when school starts. And so we do have some contingency plans to have staff who are knowledgeable available to answer questions, because in any training scenario, until you actually use the software live, you might not know what you don't know. So we'll see how September rolls, but there are a lot of plans in place to provide support for folks if they have questions.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the receiver about the update? Anything else, Dr. Valar? Are you on?
Nope. Obviously been quite busy this summer, and let's just keep our fingers crossed we fill those remaining positions. So again, have folks forward those applications.
With that, we will move on to item number 5B. The next meeting is Tuesday, September 11th at 7:00 PM here in Council Chambers. With that, we will move on to Chair President's announcements. I have a couple of announcements. I'd first like to thank the receiver for providing us both a copy of the updated MASC guide for applicable laws to school committees. I recommend that if you guys can, to look over the bilingual education law. There was a lot of changes, considering we weren't even allowed to have bilingual education before this law was passed, so I really would urge school committee members to really look over that. I'd also like to thank him for providing this yearbook from last year. I always love getting yearbooks. It's always awesome to see, you know, kids in their final years, and seeing what they've done, and seeing how each year is different, yet, you know, how happy they are, so. And I'd also like to announce that I have been talking to Council Chairman Jack Jovan, and we have both come to a conclusion that we'd like to have a joint meeting, either at the end of September or beginning of October, for an update from the receiver. I have let the receiver know about this, and we will work together to get that update, get that meeting scheduled, so that way, you know, we're all up to date as we enter the final year of the turnaround plan as was passed, so. And then I'd like to end on, oh, I have a couple, one more thing before that. Myself and Ms. Peliquin attended a conference called Local Progress, and we got some really good information as to education. I particularly also went to a forum on affordable housing. It seemed like a really important topic here in Southbridge for me to be focused in on, so it was really informative. I hope to get, you know, more people involved in going to this conference, because it provides a lot of helpful information for elected official, municipal elected officials, so. And then I'd like to end on something I really found positive. The other day while I was at work, I walked out on my lunch break, and I found one of the rocks from Southbridge Rocks that was started here in the community, and it was a really nice way to boost my day. I think we don't talk about enough what we're doing, the positive things we're doing in the community, and Southbridge Rocks is one of, it's a great morale boost. I got a rock that said "believe" on it, and it was just, I don't know exactly who started it, but I just, this has been a really great program to see in Southbridge, and I hope to see it continue to expand and, you know, continue to inspire people in the community to feel a sense of pride for where we live. With that, we will move on. I have no more announcements, and we move on to agenda item number seven, the selection of MASC conference delegates. So we have, to my knowledge, unless I am wrong, four members of the Southbridge School Committee attending MASC. Oh, did you not get the updated?
Did we get an updated agenda?
Yes, I see, you should have gotten it in an email. And then I also have copies here. My apologies, Mr. Bishop. So, so we have four members attending, unless I am wrong, and it's Ms. Shea, Ms. Peliquin, Mr. Bishop, and myself. So with that, we also, there's a delegate portion in which we vote on MASC bylaws, policies, proclamations, things like that, and I contacted MASC directly for how we would select the delegate and alternate, and they stated that the member body would have to choose the delegate and alternate. So I had, I contacted the receiver and had this added to the agenda. So with that being stated, unless there's any other questions, we can move on to 7A, the election of a voting delegate. Do we have any nominations?
I nominate our chairman, Jackie Ryan, to be the voting member to the MASC conference. Second?
Okay. We have a nomination in the second. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, we will close nominations. We don't need to do a roll call vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? All those abstaining? Mr. Bishop, you're abstaining?
I'm abstaining, because I just received this. This should have been tabled till the next meeting, so I was not concerned, but...
Mr. Bishop, you got an email. It was in your email, and I have a copy of the...
When did I get that email?
I can pull it up right now, Mr. Bishop. It was posted as following open meeting laws.
I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just not prepared to vote on this, because I'm not familiar with what it is.
We got an email on Thursday, August 9th, at 10:14 AM.
Three days ago. Three working days ago, okay.
Yep, so we were at...
Thank you.
We will now move on to 7B, the election of an alternate delegate. Do we have any nominations?
I'll nominate Martina Shea.
Do we have, okay. Do we have any further nominations for alternate? Seeing none, we'll close nominations. All those in favor of Ms. Shea being the alternate? All those opposed? All the abstaining? Okay. Let the record show, it was Mr. Bishop abstained. And then we will move on to member form. We'll start this side tonight. Mr. Bishop?
Okay, once again, I'm going to relay to Mr. Farrick that I would like an update on the unemployment rate monthly. I don't think I'm far off if I said it was $450,000 for last year. I think that's probably a figure that's going to be pretty viable. It's a lot of money, so I think overall, we need to do a better job in the selection process, so that we're not constantly bringing people in, trying them out for a year, and then paying them for half a year unemployment. We're spending a lot of money on unemployment. The only other thing I have tonight is I received a phone call tonight from a constituent. When Southbridge High School was created in approximately 1960, the town voted to build a new school. I think they combined it with the then-called trade at the time, I'm not that old, and they voted to establish colors along with the school that were red and white. Those colors were further substantiated in the school committee policy probably a decade ago by a vote of the school committee that red and white were the colors, the official colors for our school, our high school. I received a call today from a parent, and I didn't get a chance to talk to Dr. Valar about it, but I do want to mention that there's some discussion that there's been an acquisition of cheering uniforms, I don't know if there's any validity to this, where an additional color has been added. I think that red and white is the colors that replaced the crimson and, crimson and gray, I think back when Mr. Thomo was going to school there. But seriously, if we have a policy, I understand our policies are only as good as the Commonwealth of Massachusetts wants to keep them. I'm not sure if Dr. Valar has adjusted those policies to reflect the red and white, it's not the official colors of the school, but I hope that any acquisition of school-purchased uniforms and items in that realm would be with the traditional red and white. I remember back when the former Commissioner of Education, the night before they took over our school district on January 25th of 2015, sat on the stage up here at the old Southridge High, and said that he was big on tradition, he was going to maintain traditions. So I would like to see us maintain the red and white tradition without any additional colors being thrown in there, but that's just, again, what the caller had expressed to me, and then my own personal. I haven't worked in the district for 32 years. I'm red and white, and I hope that we will be, it shouldn't be a big deal, really, it should not be a big deal. I think it's just an oversight, maybe somebody didn't know what the constant flex and transition at leadership and coaching and athletic directors... flex and transition at leadership and coaching and athletic directors. I mean, it needs to be red and white, and that's just one person, the state can do whatever they want, as is shown to us daily. Thank you.
Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Bishop regarding the red and white colors. I think the last time I was in school, which was about two and a half years ago, I think even the band uniforms were red and black, if I'm not mistaken. I don't know if it's still that, but it's not really consistent with tradition. And a second question would be to Mr. Blah. I understand there's some major changes being made at the Cole Trade Building, the academy. Is that correct? Are we taking students, Southbridge students in from Project Grow, and the students that are there now from Southbridge are going to be put back at the high school? Is that correct? Or something similar to that?
As, as we've discussed early, early last spring, what we're doing is investing in the Southbridge Academy program, so that it is a partial therapeutic day program. So there are students who have been placed out of the district at extreme cost that are now being returned to the district, representing savings for us.
Good.
Students who are attending that school aren't necessarily being sent back to the high school by any directive of order. We, we follow federal legislation and provide students with free and appropriate public education and be sure that we have them educated what's called the least restricted environment. So there could be IEP determinations that say that a student should be educated either, I'm in a traditional program and/or out of district program, but that IEP team would have to make those decisions. So our objective is to make that, the alternative school very successful, and potentially tuition in students from other districts later on, but certainly to provide higher-quality services for kids who are in our schools now.
And do you see a savings this year?
Well, at this point, we're hoping to be cost-neutral, because we have invested in, in the program. With those students returning from Grow, some of them represent, you know, expenditures in the tens of thousands of dollars. So it's very early. I wouldn't stand and suggest that we've, you know, found a financial windfall, but it's certainly tracking in the right direction.
And just one for the quick question. The savings on that one bus, was that accomplished? We had talked about possibly eliminating one bus?
We have not changed any of the bus routes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Duval?
I am not in the seat.
Okay. Ms. Shea?
On the issue of the white and red, I am old enough to have been there, and we did change it from crimson and gray to scarlet and white because it was updating the older colors. And we've gone through this a couple of times. There were a while when they were doing a teal outline on all of the uniforms, because we needed three colors. I don't know why, but this has been an ongoing issue. I also have, I'd like to talk about summer reading. For those of you who have not yet done your summer reading, it's time to get at it. The high school is all reading the same book. The elementary schools have a wide range of books they can look at. I went to the library today, and the children's room is ready for you. You just go in, and there is a, a bookcase with the approved books with little red stickers on them and the grade level. So there's no excuse. Just go in, get your books, and get your reading done. It will start you off well on your new school year.
Okay. Ms. Duval, you had your hand up?
Yeah. I'm talking about colors. I went to Butler, and the green and white. Didn't like the crimson and gray. I'd much rather have the red and white.
Okay. Ms. Peliquin?
Did we announce the first day of school yet?
I'm sorry?
What's the first day of school, just so the public knows?
August 27th.
August 27th. Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other? No? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? All those opposed?